The time. Let's call tonight's meeting to order. Will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty.
Here.
Counselor Tivnan. Counselor Teeter.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy.
Here.
Counselor Hassan.
Here.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Here.
Counselor Dugger.
I'm here.
All present.
All right, so we have a short, long agenda tonight. So we will start with our first action item, which is 24166, the election of the council president. And I will take any motions from the floor. Counselor Teeter.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Dugger for council president.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Thank you, I'd like to nominate Counselor Kimmy.
Okay, we have two nominations from the floor. So how we've handled this in the past, since Counselor Dugger was nominated first, we'll vote on that motion. If it passes... You're looking at me like I'm saying this wrong.
You don't need a motion. You have two nominations. And all you need to do is, with your first nominee, take a voice vote.
Okay.
A roll call vote.
That's what I was getting at.
And then if that person succeeds, you would not move to the next nominee.
Got it. Okay, so we will take a voice vote on Counselor Dugger. Do I do that, or is the city recorder?
The city recorder could...
I mean, I could do it too. Is that fine, if I just call on people?
You will also be voting, so it would make more sense for the city recorder to do the voice vote.
All right, city recorder.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Kimmy.
No.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
No.
Counselor Dugger.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
No.
Counselor Hassan.
No.
All right, we'll move on to the second nomination. We'll take the roll call vote.
Counselor Dugger. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes. I just would like for the record to say that we did that 16 times faster than the city of Portland just did, in the amount of nominations they took. So, two rounds, council president. Congratulations, Counselor Kimmy. Okay, next order of business is public comment, visitor comment. As a reminder, visitor comment is a time for us to hear from the community, and it is not a time for dialogue. Meaning, if there's follow-up required, we'll direct the city manager or the city recorder to make any follow-up. With that, we have a mixture of in-person and in-house combination here. So, I'm sorry, my computer screen's a little messed up. Do... okay, our first person remotely is Alicia from the chamber. If we can grant her permission to speak, you'll have two minutes to address the council. She's remotely.
Good evening, mayor and city councilors. Congratulations on your swearing in, and thank you for another term of service. My name is Alicia Burmese, and I service as CEO for the Beaverton area Chamber of Commerce. I'm speaking tonight because I see you will be receiving a presentation from Metro this evening on the supportive housing services program. While I know you cannot take action, I encourage you to hear this presentation with a careful ear. This was originally publicly put forward as having the support of all of the chambers in the Portland metro area. Please know that it does not. While a tax cut would generally be something that businesses aren't supportive, the extension of the SHS tax until 2050 seems like a bit of an overreach, given that we have just started to realize the benefits of this tax and putting systems into place that aid our homeless population. We encourage you to suggest that Metro not be so eager to extend this tax until more research has been done, and we know more about the true cost of supporting this population. This will include all cities and chambers being invited to the table. Our businesses have seen progress in Beaverton towards relief of the impact of homelessness on their businesses. We know that homelessness in Beaverton has decreased significantly, and would hate to see that change when things are moving in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, in-person, we have Jaclyn Leedy. And on deck will be Mark Wilcox. When you come to the mic, you'll have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, I was told I had three minutes. Is it three or two? All right. Good evening, mayor and fellow councilors. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony this evening. My name is Jaclyn Leedy, and I am the co-founder of Mutz Coffee, a coffee shop located at 4925 Southwest Angel Avenue, between Fourth and Fifth Street, close to the Beaverton High School and the city library. We have been serving our community here in Beaverton for a little over a year now. In addition to offering up all the usual menu items you'd expect to find at a coffee house, you'll find much more at Mutz, including a community adoptable board featuring adoptable shelter pets, a year-round drop-off hub for pet supplies and food for one of our local rescue partners, and a rescue retail shelf sporting items for sale, with 100% of the purchase supporting various rescue organizations. At Mutz, we donate 25% of our own coffee sales to our rescue partners, in addition to our drip coffee program. That program equates to thousands of dollars to small rescues who do life-saving work in their respective counties. Mutz has also partnered with the local community outside of animal welfare here in Beaverton, such as our community voucher program that we have set up with HomePlate, where the at-risk youth who use their resources can redeem vouchers at Mutz for food and drink items. Mutz has never been backed by big banks or investors, just loyal supporters and customers, and those who believe in us and our vision. They see the heart we put into our business every day and our passion for helping animals. Though this road hasn't been easy for us, we finally reached a place where it has started to feel like we might be safe, even with the economic climate that we now face, with commodities like eggs, milk, and green coffee being at an all-time high. That was until we began receiving threats from the city of Beaverton about our parking lot. Our property owner was never given an opportunity of due process, and as the current occupant and business owner of one of the three businesses who occupy 4925 Southwest Angel Avenue, we have not been given the opportunity to submit impact statements as to the very real harm our business will suffer if our parking were to be taken away from us. A parking lot that I remember personally using over a decade ago, when I lived just a few blocks away and would visit the vegetarian restaurant, which is where my neighbor Yubi Sushi now operates out of. My business partner, Mark, will be speaking tonight about the direct impacts we will face as a business if a solution cannot be reached that would satisfy all interested parties involved. Thank you for your time.
Mark?
Do I need to press the button? Yes. Sorry. Okay. Good evening. My name is Mark Wilcox. I am one of the co-founders of Mutz Coffee Roasters. I'm here tonight to offer some perspective on the damage these parking changes will do to my small business and some of the burden it will put on our existing customers. Let's start with coffee business in general. I've been involved in this industry for over 25 years. And at this point, it's always been a low-margin business that relies on volume and convenience to keep the lights on. When my partner and I were looking for cafe spaces to lease, accessible parking was one of our main priorities. And over the course of the last year in business, has proven to be a valuable asset to our steady growth. The current parking arrangement allows our customers that need mobility assistance a shorter distance to travel to our door. It allows our families with young children on their way to the park a convenient way to stop and for food and drink. It's an unwelcoming space for all travelers that make Mutz a part of their journey, as we hear from a lot of our customers who've come to visit the region. Much has become... Mutz has become as much of a destination shop as it is currently a neighborhood shop. The change to our parking will reduce our available spots by 2/3, and increase congestion on the street in front of our business by forcing vehicles to park on the asphalt. This reduces our visibility, makes it harder for our customers to visit, and in the end, will have a very negative impact on our ability to grow and continue to serve the community. Furthermore, it puts ourselves and our staff in the awkward position of becoming parking enforcers, as we'll have to intervene with the way our customers are used to parking and have been used to parking for years, or risk them being ticketed. When something has been allowed for over 10 years, only recently become a pressing matter for a department that has so far only shown us a rigid adherence to code and unwillingness to listen to the potential economic harm that decision will have on the small business community. To me, that doesn't seem to line up with the economic prosperity goals, which the city council has outlined as one of their eight strategic goals. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next, we have Remote Isabel. Is she on there? Does not look like it. In-person, we have Guy Hamilton. And then on deck will be Maggie Myers virtually.
Mayor, I don't see Isabel online, so...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Greetings, mayor and city council members. My name is Guy Hamilton, and I am co-owner of the property at 4925 Southwest Angel Avenue, the property where Mutz Coffee is located. And my wife and I have been property owners in Beaverton for about 16 years. That is a great location, by the way. And it's thriving, it's growing, especially since we were able to make some transformation in the storefront, improving the parking. And people, the community, has received it well. They love to come to the location. Not only do we have Mutz Coffee there, but we have Yubi Sushi. And people like to come and have coffee with their domestic animal, and relax, and it's a comforting place, a welcoming place. And, you know, they also like to come and have dinner at Yubi Sushi. So, we need your help, we need your support, we need your advocacy regarding the parking. The Code Compliance Office just hasn't been willing to work with us. And we're open to that. But, you know, the parking is going to be an issue for our business location, for the tenants, for their customers. And so, we need some time to work that out. I know there's some dates out there, January 12. And to be honest with you, I don't much appreciate how we've been treated on that matter, but in terms of how it was handled. But we need your advocacy. We need your support and some more time to roll out a reasonable and equitable fair plan that's going to protect the parking in the interest of the community and our tenants and customers. Thank you for your time.
Awesome, thank you so much. With that, Maggie Myers virtually. And then in-person, on deck is Eleanor Garnett. All right, Maggie, granted you permission to speak?
Okay, great, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. My name is Maggie Myers. I'm a member of the Beaverton Climate Action Task Force, and I'm here to read a letter on behalf of the task force. Dear City Council, the Climate Action Task Force has prided itself immensely in using a system of shared governance to reach compassionate consensus in the process of advising staff around how we implement climate-friendly practices. From choosing to have multiple co-chairs rather than putting power on a single chair, to ensuring that we have agreement on issues, we've been a force for change, and a good one at that. Much of this work has been a direct result of our leadership, one of whom has not been offered reappointment for the 2025 year. While we respect that some councilors have expressed concern around spousal relationships on boards and commissions, we also challenge it. We believe there are ways to ensure that when these relationships exist, conflict of interest is discussed and vetted through a process. Such a process is how Tigerd, our neighboring city, handles this issue. More importantly, an advisory body created for community engagement doesn't create such a conflict. Council spouses by necessity also reside in the city of Beaverton and must not be deprived of the opportunity to share their own personal thoughts and opinions simply because of who they are married to. Additionally, given that this discussion was held during a work session, we know that these rules have not actually been implemented or agreed upon. We call into question the invocation of a rule which did not receive consensus support as grounds for barring one of our own members from being reappointed. If you know Syed like we do, you know his passion for climate is so deep that removing him is a loss to the work and to this group. He deeply understands the intersectionality of race, equity, climate, energy, and transportation, and has been a crucial member in our work. The news of removing one of our co-chairs without even allowing an opportunity to interview for replacement is deeply disappointing and discouraging to our members. Given that the rule does not officially exist, we urge you to consider reappointing Syed to continue on with the Climate Action Task Force until the task force sunsets upon the adoption of B cap 2.0. Syed's removal would harm the Climate Action Task Force and reduce the diversity of perspectives that our team represents. Reappointing Syed to the Climate Action Task Force will benefit the B cap 2.0 process and thereby climate action in years to come. We urge you to prioritize climate action and sustainability rather than removing Syed for a policy that does not exist. Sincerely, the Beaverton Climate Action Task Force. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Garnett, and on deck is Novella Hamilton.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Garnett, and I live on Angel Avenue, a block away from Mutz Coffee and Yubi Sushi. I have lived in downtown Beaverton for almost five years, and in that time, the space in front of the building, home to Mutz Coffee and Yubi Sushi, has always been a parking area. When Yubi Sushi first moved in and began to thrive, parking was haphazard, with many vehicles overlapping onto the sidewalk while parked at an angle, thereby minimizing the space available in front of the building. When the property put in parking stops, it not only alleviated the sidewalk issue, but also increased the number of people able to park in front of the business they're patronizing. As a result of this, there are fewer strange cars parked in front of my house whose occupants I need to worry about. For some members of this council, this may not be... This may be a non-issue. But as a single woman who walks her dog alone at night, I am very aware of all unknown cars that spend extended periods of time outside my home, and would very much prefer that they be in a designated parking area near their owners. I love walking into Mutz, and knowing that my treat of the day will benefit a local business that donates all of its proceeds to help dogs. Walking past Yubi Sushi and seeing a sign in their window limiting party sizes to four brightens my soul because it means that they have more patrons and space. Seeing the parking area in front of Mutz Coffee and Yubi Sushi full is wonderful, because it means they're doing well. And as a local resident, I want those businesses to survive and stay in the neighborhood. I am proud to live in the city of Beaverton. We foster small businesses, help to establish them, and get them on their feet. This council should be working with Mutz Coffee, Yubi Sushi, and their landlord to find a mutually beneficial compromise, not putting them in a position where they'll have to leave the neighborhood. And make no mistake, you take their parking, they will be forced out. I really have to wonder why the city is objecting to this parking area now, when it has been there for so long, and there are so many other properties in the surrounding area with a similar setup. Why now? Why them? What motivation does the city of Beaverton have to target this specific property? The handling of this situation makes me wonder if I chose correctly when filling out my ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Novella Hamilton?
My name is Novella Hamilton, and I am the property owner, co-owner, at 4925 Southwest Angel Avenue in Beaverton. I am here to request a formal review of the Code Compliance Department's demand to eliminate storefront parking on my property. This demand threatens my tenants' businesses and contradicts past city approvals for these parking enhancements. In 2028, I was awarded the city of Beaverton's Tenant Improvement Grant, which included a city-sponsored designer and later funding to bring the design to fruition. Parking enhancements were explicitly discussed, documented, designed, and approved during this process. I was led to believe, and never told otherwise, that our parking was approved and could be included in the project, which it was. The sudden reversal is a broken promise and jeopardizes the livelihoods of my tenants and my future ability to attract businesses. This abrupt deadline without collaboration undermines our longstanding partnership with the city and places an undue burden on our businesses that rely so heavily on the parking to serve their customers. I am here today to request three things. One, an immediate suspension of the compliance deadline scheduled for January 13, 2025. Please allow time for a thorough review of all evidence, including emails, photos, and approved designs that I've submitted to this council. Two, a collaborative review process. An opportunity to engage in open dialogue to identify solutions that maintain compliance while addressing the needs of my tenants, their customers, and the community. And three, a recognition of historical city approval. Consider the city's role in designing and funding these parking enhancements and their joint responsibility to finding an equitable solution. In conclusion, I am committed to working with the city to resolve this matter constructively. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter. I remain confident we can find a solution that upholds the integrity of our community while respecting my rights as a property owner and my tenants' rights to exist without fear and intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hamilton, you could stay for a second. It's unorthodox for us to address public testimony. But given the sheer volume of testimony we've received, not just tonight, but over the last couple of weeks, and just for preference, this is the public comment document we received. We read them. So on behalf of the city council, because of the way we operate, the city council is not allowed to discuss among each other. But as the full-time elected representative, I met with staff this week about your business, about Mutz, about the sushi place. A lot of us spend a lot of time in downtown. I lived around the corner for a lot of years. I've been in that building when it was a coffee shop, two coffee shops ago, when it was a vegetarian restaurant, when it was the building for homeless services for the school district, when it was the hair salon. It's been a plethora of things. So, the staff and I sat in a room and discussed that we're going to do a six-month timeframe, so that we have some time, that you guys have time to work with the staff on some of the code complaints issues, recognizing the questions that you raised and the email that you sent to council, as well as everything we've read. It's enough for us to say, let's take a step, let's work with staff. I'm so glad to hear that you are on board with working. I think in six months, we can come to a great conclusion for this. The parking might not look the way it looks now, but I'm confident that there is a solution out there. The city has invested over seven grants in this building. This is a building we want to stay. The work that you and your family, that you've put into it, it's noticeable. When we convert housing into businesses, it's... Some of these snags happen. I'm confident that with your business prowess and desire to support your tenants and our staff's desire to get to S, because I've told them we're getting to S, that over the next six months, we can find a solution. So if that's an okay proposal to you, that's what I'd like staff to do, and the city manager can reach out to you and set up a time to meet, and just know, like, we're... We think a solution is possible here. And so, I know that coming here tonight, talking to us, having people come and testify, we'll work a solution for this. So, thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for owning in Beaverton. Yeah. All right. It's okay to be happy. I think we're giving you what you asked for. So, you can stick around and hang out for the rest of the meeting, but I also recognize it is 6:30, and if you want to leave, we're not at all offended for that. So, if you're staying, we're moving on to our consent agenda item, and then we're going to have a presentation about supportive housing services. So, with that, council president, consent agenda, please. Don't remove it, we'll just... we'll talk about it in the...
I move to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I know we have some discussion on the motion. Counselor Teeter?
Yes, so this is regarding the 2025 council liaison roles. Counselor Kimmy and I have agreed to switch roles on the Willamette Water Supply Board of Commissioners, with Edward, with Counselor Kimmy, becoming the primary liaison, and me moving over to be the alternate, if that's okay with the rest of the approval.
Any objection to that? So with that, is it okay if we just note in the passing that that switch is happening?
Make a motion to amend that particular agenda bill to allow for that switch. That would be my recommendation.
One of you two?
Okay, yeah, I can... Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we amend Agenda Bill 24168, with the council liaison for the Willamette Water Supply System Board of Commissioners being Edward Kimmy and me becoming the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can we take a vote? Yep.
Yes. Counselor Teeter? Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
I already said Counselor Teeter, sorry. Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, thank you for that. Easiest consent agenda item ever. All right, we are on to our presentation this evening, Agenda Bill 24176. I saw Counselor...
We need to vote on consent.
You need to vote on the consent.
Okay, all right, let's do that.
So, this is a consent calendar, motion by Counselor Kimmy, seconded by Hartmeyer-Prigg. Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. All right, now we officially passed it. All right, Agenda Bill 24176, a supportive service housing program update. I saw Counselor Gonzalez and Counselor Rosenthal in the audience. Do you have a roadshow with you? Is it just you two gentlemen? All right, well, one of you introduce your buddy, and the floor will be yours.
Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be here. It's nice to see so many familiar faces. I hope we can continue to work on some of the projects that are important to Beaverton and that the metro can help with. That includes, you know, whether it's the Hall Boulevard or the TV Highway, or the support, you know, support for some of the things, like the emergency shelter that was recently opened. There's progress being made, and I'm glad that we're going to be able to work together. We're going to have a presentation about how supportive services... And I just want to note, that actually probably should read to note, that actually probably should read "Future Homeless Services and Regional Funding for Housing," because the measure that we're talking about is a supportive services measure. It's not a housing measure. The housing measure is the bond issue. Counselor Gonzalez will cover that. It's sort of a question of how we look at things. For the record, I'm Garrett Rosenthal, Metro Council, District 3, and basically, I represent the big yellow chunk of Beaverton on your map there. Everything south of TV Highway, Counselor Gonzalez gets the northern half, it's sometimes been referred to as the Swiss cheese portion of Beaverton. We've had the opportunity to talk to a lot of communities, and we realize that this whole issue of supportive services and housing is a complicated issue. We've had progress with the housing, and we've had progress with supportive services, but everybody has, there's a lot of discussion and a lot of conversation and a lot of issues that go forward. We have a lot to do in terms of the detail. We've been making progress throughout the county, throughout the region, but we haven't solved the problem yet. So now, our goal here, being here, is to make a presentation of where we stand at this point in time. It's still in flux, everything's in flux, and we hope to get good feedback. You know, it can be critical, it can be positive. We want to get good feedback so we know exactly how we can move forward and meet the requirements and the needs of Beaverton. So I'll turn that over to Counselor Gonzalez at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Rosenthal. Mayor and council, Happy New Year. I hope you're doing well. For the record, my name is Juan Carlos Gonzalez. I am a Metro Councilor for District 4, and we so appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you again, to share an update on this very important housing funding work this evening. We're going to start with a quick update on some of the progress from the Metro Affordable Housing Bond, which we have been great partners with you as one of the housing authorities here in Washington County, and also the Supportive Housing Services Program, which has created an immediate impact here in Beaverton and throughout the region. And then after that, Andy's going to help walk us through some of the updates that we have and some of this regional funding conversations, some of the tables that we've been setting, what we're hearing from partners, community members, and practitioners. And then finally, we're going to go over some of the proposed policy steps and, of course, the timelines and all the things. So without further, do I hand it off to you here? Do I keep going? Okay, excellent. Thanks. So first and foremost, on affordable housing, you have a great chart in front of you here. There's no secret, in the Portland metro area, housing, plain and simple, is just expensive. And we all feel this, we all experience it, and as a region, we've taken some major steps to addressing the affordability crisis with the Affordable Housing Bond that was passed in 2018. And we've done a lot of work to deliver deeply affordable homes, which is for folks that have little to no income at all, and also for families, so building larger units for families, which include multi-units, and you've seen this many times. And as you know, the bond will be fully spent by 2027. The funds from the 2018 bond, as we know, they have been awarded, and without new funding, the construction on affordable, deeply affordable units will very much likely stall, and you see a number here that shows expenditure and how we've made progress there. On stability, the Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Programs, they were designed to be two pieces of a puzzle. The Affordable Housing Bond was $650 million to fund capital expenses, so the sticks and the bricks, while the Supportive Housing Services Measure is a 10-year tax on high-income earners and businesses, which went into effect in 2021, set to expire in 2030, and this was focused on services. We have an opportunity to do something big here, to do something that hasn't been done anywhere else in the U.S. with this regionalization that we've been working to do, as you can see, creating an alignment on the continuum of housing and of care for folks in the region. We do have one of the largest public investments in homeless services per capita in the country, and that's targeted on some of the most cost-effective and impactful solutions that we know, which is delivering housing with deeply supportive services. And those investments can help us build towards a future that we can all be proud of. So in terms of SHS, we know that we are making progress, and there is no question that these dollars have made a significant impact on keeping people off of our streets, but also keeping people housed during some of the hardest moments in their lives. More than 1,800 shelter beds have been opened or maintained region-wide, some here in Beaverton, and more than 6,000 people have been housed. We've also deployed eviction prevention assistance more than 15,000 times with the Supportive Housing Services Measure, just to really call on the scale of the work that the Metro Services Measure has done. And we've also stood up programs in Clackamas County and Washington County where these level of services have not been available before. Yet, and this chart here tells a good story, the critical work of the Supportive Housing Services Program is in question in the future. Funding for the existing program will end in 2030, and with that, so will the program that is keeping thousands of peoples and thousands of households off the streets. At Metro, we are not willing to risk the housing stability of these thousands of Oregonians who are relying on the funding by waiting until the last minute to extend the program. And so we've been looking at ways that we can stabilize, strengthen, and also improve the implementation of supportive housing, while also making the funding more reliable for our county partners and for service providers to better plan for the future and also help achieve the outcomes of the voters. So a lot of different goals that we need to achieve here, and looking at that as we're essentially at the midpoint of the SHS measure. And that's why we're here today. We've been on a journey, the council's been on a journey, to listen and to learn, to really gather experts from across the region, to see how we can support Oregonians that are hanging in the balance, tens of thousands who need help, and also the hundreds that are sleeping in shelter beds that are funded by this work. So in the next set of slides, Andy's going to summarize the work to date and describe the proposal that my fellow Metro councilors and I have been really engaged in, and this is also a follow-up to some of the conversations that I know that we've had here in these chambers. So Andy, if I could pass it on to you.
Thank you. Andy Shaw, Director of Government Affairs at Metro, thanks for having us here tonight. I can't have you advance slides, I have to...
Oh, I can do it.
No, no, no. So last January, the Metro Council directed staff to explore opportunities to continue the work, as Counselor Gonzalez described, to provide housing services, to explore how to not have this cliff occur with affordable housing funding, to engage people, stakeholders, in conversations, and we have done that. So Metro staff began a process last February to engage the community members, the public. We thought it was a somewhat straightforward question, how should Metro continue to address housing, the looming gap in housing funding? And we were pleased that folks agreed, we need to continue funding for housing, we need to continue the homeless services program. The harder questions that began to come up were around governance, public trust, and So from the beginning, we want to make sure we were reaching out to a broad array of people with diverse experiences, broad expertise across the entire region. At the Metro Council's direction, our COO, Marisa Madrigal, formed a stakeholder advisory table to bring together a broad diversity of interests, experiences, perspectives, including city and county representatives, elected officials from local governments, providers of services, advocates, community-based organizations, and business leaders from around the region. Additional efforts to hear from partners in the public included community-led engagement, regional committee meetings, oversight committee meetings, public partner engagement, opinion research, and more. All this culminated last July in a COO recommendation, so at the staff level, which kicked off then several months of discussion by our Metro Council about how to move forward. That included work sessions over the summer and into the fall, and engagement meetings with other elected officials directly, meetings with other staff and other organizations throughout the fall. So then, in this work, we weren't necessarily seeking full consensus, full agreement, either in that stakeholder table process leading up to our staff recommendation, or in this fall, really looking for what are all the different perspectives on how to advance this work, how to continue funding housing, how to not fall off either cliff of housing funding or homelessness services funding. And we found a remarkable amount of agreement amongst folks around the core issues to address. Not that everyone's aligned, there are differences, and we'll get some of that towards the end, but generally, we were pleasantly surprised about the large consensus around continuing this work, continuing funding for homelessness services and housing. And so Metro Council has given us direction in a couple of different instances, including in October with a resolution, we want to continue funding for regional homelessness services, we want to add housing to that, we want to evolve this program to be more integrated and learn from the successes of the program, but also correct issues that we're identifying midstream. So we have an emerging proposal that's coming from different places. Some service providers and business leaders have come together to propose an extension with a package of tax reforms. If this package is approved, it would mean hundreds of millions of dollars would go to counties for core SHS services over the next 20 years. It's in the range of $5 to $10 billion more in resources that could not only fund these core supportive housing services programs, but also provide additional funding for affordable housing over the life of the program. As Counselor Gonzalez noted, if we don't do anything, the program ends in five years, and we are quite afraid of hitting that cliff and facing the prospect of turning people out of rental assistance and housing they have right now. So key aspects, did I miss going forward? Key aspects of the proposal include extending the program to 2050, so for 20 more years beyond the 2030 end of the current program, adding affordable housing and permanent supportive housing as eligible uses. Right now, only services are eligible under the income, the SHS taxes. Include cities as implementation partners, and I'm sure we'll get some questions about how that might work, we're still exploring that realm. Prioritizing stable funding for the counties. So this has been a very volatile revenue source that we've picked, personal income taxes and business income taxes, and we want to find ways to stabilize the core funding for counties and manage the volatility of the revenues above and beyond what the base amount counties are getting. We heard a lot about the need to strengthen and simplify oversight of the program. There are three different committees right now overseeing the bond and two overseeing the services program. So create a single oversight body with clear roles and responsibilities in overseeing the program. Create a regional action plan, so there's a really clear regional level of what we're trying to accomplish that then local county plans flow into, and advance regional standards and goals as a part of that new structure. We also heard a lot about the desire to provide some tax relief if we're looking at extending this for 20 years, given that the program has raised more than the initial estimates were, even though, and we also know that all these resources are needed to provide services. But the initial measure was expected to raise about $250 million a year. We're now raising north of $350 million a year. That number's going to go up and down every cycle with changes in people's incomes, but between $250 million and $425 million is what we expect the revenue source to be over time. Going to the next. So we've heard a lot of concerns over time about these proposals, and so predictability is one of the key areas we're trying to address. We're hearing people want to see consistent funding for counties, they don't want to see ups and downs that force the kind of cuts that were, the counties are looking at having to make this next year, given their loss in revenue from the year before. So addressing predictability over time. We've heard lots of concern, again, about having a real strong regional approach. The supportive housing services revenue source has been a game changer for the ability of counties to really provide much more holistic services and a cross-regional approach. As Counselor Gonzalez mentioned, no other region is taking this approach, like LA County's doing it, but the larger LA region is not coordinated around their provision of services between counties and cities. We've heard a lot of concern about reducing tax rates and changing the amount of revenue that the resource is bringing in. We've also heard a lot of concern from businesses, you heard earlier, support for general tax increases, but what does that do to the revenue stream over time? And we've also heard a lot of concern about timing. Why move this ahead now? And I think our concern is, the more we wait, the more we get into a scenario where we have to start looking at potential ramp-down plans for ending the spending of the money if the voters are not willing to extend it, and we don't want to get into that scenario. So the council is looking at a range of potential changes in those realms we've talked about. We've scheduled work sessions for the 16th of January and the 23rd of January, looking at potential action on a referral to the ballot in early February, and they'll be exploring all these different pieces of the potential measure to determine exactly where to land on each of those elements. I think there's also the possibility of referring some elements to the ballot now that require voter approval while waiting on some other elements or acting on some elements that require further work along the way in the months to come. So those are all, I think this is meant to be a balancing beam, those are all elements that the council's going to be looking at balancing with input from partners like you. With that, I think I'm sending it back to you to close this out.
Hey. So you have a question on your screen now, and our effort to come here in full force with this party of both Washington County Metro councilors, our government affairs director, is we're in this really key phase of design as we approach a timeline of potentially referring something to the ballot, and we want to know, what do you think that our council should be considering in this draft proposal to ensure that our region is effectively addressing homelessness? Thanks.
If I might just add one comment, just so you know, we're still in discussion, the council is not entirely in agreement on all the nuances, there's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot of ways of dealing with both the tax issues, as well as the timing issues, as well as the balance issues, as well as the city issues and so forth. So we are really looking for input from the cities and from the other stakeholders. Our minds are not entirely made up yet, we're not presenting you a, this is how it's going to be, so we really want your input.
Thank you for that. As somebody that has been in nearly every conversation about this from the advisory committee that advised the COO on her recommendation and what came forward, also, I have the unique opportunity to chair the Metropolitan Mayors Consortium, so all 16 cities that sit on that. Here are my high-level thoughts, and they won't be new to probably Andy, because he's been in most of the room, and probably not new to any of you guys. It was interesting to hear your perspective, Andy, that you guys had surprisingly support on converting this to housing, because that is not what I've heard in any of those meetings, unless you're a provider that does housing. Then, of course, you want to move this money into housing. Cities and counties have been unified that we can't afford to build more affordable housing right now, the actual cost of building it, and we had a very successful first bond that did it, no arguing. Beaverton did five projects, but we had to waive SDC fees, we had to buy down property, we had to bridge fund. We just heard about our project in South Cooper Mountain that was a Herculean left to get off the ground, both in staff time permitting. Oregon Community Housing Foundation had to be in. All these projects take so much kind of funding. Beaverton is in a structural deficit right now, and we are coming up on one of our hardest years in history, and we're not unique. Most cities in Oregon are facing this under Measure 5 and 50, and so we are not in a financial position to move this to housing. And the cities that are in a wealthy position to do it maybe could, but none of the cities and the metropolitan mayors want to move forward with converting this money to housing. So just to kind of move that, and it's hard, because your presentation is moving between the Housing Bond and the SHS Bond, and if you're new to this topic, it's kind of hard to assess those two things out. Really, we're here because the bond ended, Metro looked at doing a second bond, there was not enough support among elected officials, so then you're looking at this fund because it was over-collecting or collecting more than anticipated. But the sentiment is still the same. We can't partner with you, and we've asked for things like SDC waivers, and if you do that, it's going to make housing easier for cities, but we're going to produce way less housing. Because for a project for us, that's maybe 50 units, that's about $4 to $5 million of SDCs. So if you guys contribute that, the amount of housing we're going to build is significantly lower. We've heard from all the service providers in Beaverton, they are deeply concerned with the fact that we want to reduce the tax burden, which is really great for people that are in it, but that's going to produce less money, because, right? Like, that's just the reality. If we collect less, it's producing less money. We're only really three years into this, and you said if it doesn't pass, we have five years left, but really it's six, but really, we didn't get a year till going, because Metro had to get the tax in order, get it to counties, so we're in our third year. This measure is doing remarkably well for where we're at. Like, Beaverton just opened its first year-round shelter. We've reduced homelessness by over 70%, but just like the first bond, Beaverton spends a ton of money out of our general fund to address homelessness, in the $5 to $6 to $7 million range, between our bike team, police officers, we had to hire a library monitor because it's become our day center. And so we have a full FTE working at the library to address issues around homelessness, around cleanliness, how people are operating. When I take my own kids in the building, sometimes I feel unsafe. So at the beckoning of our staff that we're dealing with this frontline issue, with families like mine that are into the building, we added a staff member, not to include the millions of dollars we have spent on actual cleanup of camps. So those are unallowable uses that we've asked to have addressed, because, and if you start addressing what cities are spending out of the general fund, there's likely no money left after that to address housing. Beaverton is not unique in spending money on homeless services outside of our service providers, and we have a great relationship with the county. And so the mayors collectively, along with the county chairs, have been asking Metro to slow down, and there seems to be no interest in that. This is driven by the Portland Business Chamber and the Portland groups that feel like Portland is not doing enough work on homelessness, and you are a regional government that is succumbing to what Portland is asking you to do. And so that is really challenging for us. And... And, and the kind of draft proposal that we've gotten around direct funding to cities is that we can compete for $5 million over three counties in the 16 cities. Us alone are spending more than that money. And that's not a, that's not a big enough nod to get this mayor to want to accomplish, to come alongside of you. And I, and we've seen the polling. The community is not, does not highly support the work we're doing right now because the homelessness services are there. That was your guys' polling that we all looked at. So you want us to go forward with a measure that doesn't have community support with the counties and the cities and the mayors and the county chairs. In fairness, the council hasn't weighed in on this like I have. You want to move through a ballot measure that doesn't seem to have support. And we're not saying that this measure isn't working. We're saying let's slow down. So like, why are you guys so gung ho to move to the ballot right now when the polling doesn't suggest it and your largest partners are saying, hey, let's slow down for a minute and get this right? So if we go to the voters, I want to feel confident to say that we are actually doing what you asked us to do. And that is the supportive services of this. And yeah, we can ask them if we can convert it to housing, but like right now, I don't feel good enough to go to voters and say, we've done what you've asked us to do with this money. So if you continue to hear this message with the, all the mayors are saying, are you willing to move and wait another year or two for us to go to the ballot? And why is the rush right now and who's driving this decision?
There was a lot there. So a couple of thoughts. When we first started looking at using additional resources beyond what the base amount was for housing, there were, there was strong interest in, in exploring that space. And I think permanent supportive housing became the core focus for our county partners. They are very interested in having the flexibility to spend these resources on the capital side of permanent supportive housing and can't do that currently under the measure. I think we've come to the place of recognizing the county's desire to not change the, the core allocation for the next few years. And if there are additional resources beyond that core allocation within a few fiscal years, looking at those additional resources potentially for housing. So I think we're, I think the council, I think Council President Peterson is hearing the concerns about jumping too quickly into changing that core allocation for counties and, and allocating resources to housing ahead of stabilizing the full program. So just in, I think there has been, folks have heard those concerns and, and we're adjusting the proposal to accommodate that. I think we're also very interested in exploring with our city partners, with counties, legislation like Representative Gamba's bill to help provide SDC waivers or credits for cities that are, are working on building affordable housing. In terms of timing, let me talk about the polling. So with the, with the polling, we did some polling last spring, shared that with our stakeholder table, did some more polling this last fall. We've got a poll out in the field right now that we'll get results for quite soon. What we are seeing is a very strong interest in the public in continue, amongst the, the voting public in continuing funding for affordable housing. There's a, across the board, homelessness and affordable housing, livability are the top concerns amongst voters. The weakness is in simply extending the tax itself. And support for extending the tax has diminished over time, while familiarity with the overall S H S program has increased and disbelief that the program is having the effect that we are seeing is, has grown. So we're seeing this, this divergence between public support for the overall program and when you, but when you put together a package of governance reforms, simplifying the governance, getting stronger accountability measures behind a regional plan with allowing some of the money to be used for housing, that coupled with extending the program gains support of the public. And so we, we are seeing results in the high 50% up past 60% support once voters understand that overall package. If you just poll on the question of extending the tax alone, it's below 50%. So that, that's how we're viewing the polling. And I think the concern is over time, if we wait two more years, do we see a dramatic enough change in the public's view of success, even while we are confident we'll continue making success? Do we see enough change that that support for extending the program improves at all? And if not, we're starting to bump up against the end of the program. And I think Metro would feel required to start asking for ramp down plans, beginning to move people out of housing, beginning to prepare for the end of the program, even while we would of course pursue extension of the program. So jumping on it now, while there is a somewhat broad coalition of folks that support the overall pieces, if not all of the pieces of this proposal, I think is what's driving the desire to continue looking at the May 2025 ballot.
And are, are you committed to going to the ballot if your major government partners continue to tell you the same thing? That cities aren't being made whole, the timeline doesn't feel right? Like at what point? Because I mean, I've been in, I looked at my calendar, over 20 meetings about this topic. We're the same, leaving the same meeting every time with the same questions. The city partners, the county partners are not in alignment with Metro's vision. So at what point do you disregard our opinions and move forward? Or is there a compromise to listen to us about not going out in May when voters, we're asking, this is a, a personal income tax. This is deeply personal for our residents that are paying it. And we can't just say we're going to continue this bond for 30 years. I mean, this is everyday people's money when they could barely afford to live. Like I take that responsibility extremely seriously. And I just, what we've heard in the partnership has been like, come to the table, but nothing has seemed to move.
I'm going to respond, and I'm going to ask a question also. First of all, I'm going to respond by saying I still consider the timing an open question. There's a lot of moving parts. The political reality, of course, is that the biggest voting block is in the city of Portland. And I don't represent any of Portland and, and I'm not particularly familiar with the, the mood in the city of Portland. But obviously that is something that has to be considered. So I'm, I'm going to say that I have not made up my mind on that. And I'm going to be very clear. But the question I want to ask you is in this regards to the city aspect, there's two ways to go at the city aspect. One is to allow the county to continue to do. And I've, you said you have a good relation, working relationship with the county. I know that's also true with Tiger Towalton and Sherwood because they recently hired somebody who's going to deal with this, with these ancillary kinds of problems of supportive services. So I guess the, the other issue that I consider still open is what is the best way to assist the cities in doing the things that you say that, that have already done, such as, you know, providing services in the libraries or providing some outreach to the senior centers or whatever the, the situation may be. So I think, I consider that's still an open question that has not been resolved. And to the extent that some people on the council may find it resolved, I am not in agreement.
Thank you for that question. And I'll make it brief so the other counselors can jump in. I wrote a, a letter to the county chair outlining the city's desire for funding in those three categories. Police officers, cleanup and library monitor. And we're being told it's a not allowable use. So I think you can make those rules changing without going to the ballot. I think counties need to be fully funded, not just that, what we thought, the 250 million that we were projecting it to be. We understand that, just like everyone else, costs have gone up, delivering the services costs more. Cities should be made whole ahead of any money moving to, to housing. It should be counties, cities made whole for what we're spending. And then I don't project there'd be any money after that. That money could be used for housing. But again, that's not what the people on the ground doing the work is telling Metro is the problem. We're telling you that we need to address this problem that voters passed this ballot to do. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us tonight. I had a couple of questions. You showed us the graph that showed the funding and, you know, the cliff that will come. So you showed us the cliff of revenue, but you didn't show us your projected expenses. And so I'm really curious, like especially since we've had a surplus, you know? And I know that it took a little time to get the program going, but we're, we're really grateful for this funding. It has been so important for us to open our own shelter, right? They can, in a, a really beautiful example of our, all of our overlapping jurisdictions working together to make this project happen. Like it's something that as counsel, we had our retreat this past weekend, and it's like top highlight for us this year. And it couldn't have happened without partnership. But I, I'm really curious, right? To only see the revenue drop off, like there's all, because there's surplus and because we're still trying to make the best use of the funding, that money just, while the revenue's gone, what are our projections of spending it? Right? Because I, I think it's not fair to see both because there's, there's hundreds of millions of dollars in surplus over the 10 years, right? Maybe like, does like, it might get us to a billion. I don't know. I'm not very good at math. You know, but like there's a ton of extra money there. And so help us understand also, because I think it's very premature to go back to the voters at this point, except if you just wanted to get more permissible uses, like not from the housing side, but like to make sure that like, if we really think there is a revision in certain, like what the definition of S H S is. But I think that to go out to 2050 is a really scary thing. And to say, I'm going to commit to this, I mean, that's, it's 25 more years, right? Like whereas it should only be five years. And so I think that for me, I need to know more about the projected expenses because I feel like we didn't get the whole story to actually understand the motivation also for, for pushing it forward at this time.
You want to talk a little bit about the expenses and how counties are sharing?
Yeah, so we've, we've run some scenarios is the best term I can use to look at, at revenues going forward. You know, getting out past a few years with these revenue sources is very hard to forecast. In fact, we just revised, we, we get all the data from the previous fiscal year in, in November, and we revised the forecast going forward. We just revised the forecast down $50 million for each of the next two years as a result of, of new information about what the economy looks like going forward. So with that kind of fluctuation, it's just incredibly hard to look out 20 years and be accurate in any, in any sense. Our, our job under this measure is to collect the revenue and pass it along to the counties. And the county's job is then to establish local implementation plans that, that meet the goals of the measure. And so the expenditure side really comes from, from the counties. And that, that is one of the challenges that we're trying to manage or balance in, in this, in this set of reforms is how do we maintain that localized flexibility while also having some level of accountability back to the voters at the, at the regional scale around those expenditures? So from the expenditure side, I think what the counties are saying is they're, they're ramping up their program. They're getting to a level of service with about $323 million that they're receiving right now that, that allows them to meet the goals of the measure. And so reducing below that level would, would threaten our ability to actually serve this 5,000 and 10,000 people in these two population target areas, Population A and Population B. In terms of surplus or, or carryover, there was indeed about $400 million of carryover at the beginning of, of last calendar year. And that was, that was a part of the conversation at the stakeholder table about having extra resources that were not being expended, having more resources than we'd thought when we first enacted the program. And so, but since that time, counties have moved fast to try to allocate those funds. They haven't spent them all, but they have directed where those funds are going to. A lot of that on one-time expenses. Not all of it on one-time expenses, which is creating a part of the challenge that counties are seeing now, which is where we've just reduced the forecast by $50 million. And so counties are going to struggle with maybe getting a little overskies in terms of spending some of that carryover on ongoing services. So everyone's trying really hard to ramp this thing up and, and get, get the services out the door. I don't think we see a whole lot of extra resource right now for the goal of funding housing. But I think we do see in the future the ability to add flexibility to provide some affordable housing. In the meantime, allow counties to spend the, the resources they do have on permanent supportive housing, which is the whole point of the chart Counselor Gonzalez put up of pairing housing with the services.
Thank you. And I'm curious, as part of your response, you were talking about the oversight. Can you just share more about what does that mean? Is this like a, you know, a joint oversight committee with representation from across the region? Like what kind of teeth are actually there? Is that part of your plan into the, you know, the revision? Because I think that if it doesn't have teeth, right? Like we, we really do need to have like meaningful oversight.
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor. Thank you for the question. The, the governance structure that we're envisioning would have broad regional representation and would definitely include some of those accountability mechanisms to ensure that as the region develops this North Star, that we are able to truly advance the goals of the measure. I think one of the, one of the elements that we hear from providers, like let alone not even talking about everyone else in the ecosystem, is that we really have a system that is three individual systems within one region instead of a regional system working across all of its efficiencies to address the 6,000 unsheltered people that are living, you know, outside right now in the Portland metro area, around 5,000 of those in Multinoma County. And so, you know, there's, there needs to be this, this deeper collaboration. And this process has really been, you know, people from different, like different stakeholders coming together to talk about what can we implement from what we've learned so far? And we feel like there's a really general, broad agreement from the different stakeholder tables that we've had, including from key leadership from the implementing partners.
Thank you. My last question is also, maybe also it's kind of a, a statement coupled in it, but I'm concerned about hearing about all this engagement, but then not seeing a whole lot of change to the proposal, but also not seeing a clear what is going into the measure. And you're talking about May, right? So I, I think that that's also quite concerning to me. And I, I have major concerns with the cities and counties not really being on board with this plan because I've, I've won hard races. I've helped other people win hard races. And you want people who've won hard races to help you on this? And I don't think that I'm hearing that type of support from folks who have won hard races for this. And like, we have one chance, I think, to go get the revision right. And I would be very hesitant to sign on to something saying that the city council supports that. Like that's where I'm at with this, just, you know? So my question though is, how has this changed based on the feedback that's been received through the 20-plus meetings that the mayor's been on, the impact that Counselor Tibnun sits on? And, you know, all, like we've, you've, you've come to visit us before too, and we've also given feedback. So I'm just curious, what are like, can you highlight the changes that have come from the engagement?
Oh yeah, there, there's been so many. It's, it's hard to know where to start. I mean, like, like Counselor Rosenthal mentioned, and maybe Counselor, you want to chime in here. The, the general elements of even of what we were able to share in our slides have been, that's really been the last iteration of, of the proposal. You know, there's been a lot of negotiation and collaboration with, with some of the folks that are at the, at the, I guess what I would call the executive negotiation table, which includes counties and provider networks and different coalitions and things like that, to look at a different reduction to the tax rate, to, to look at different income threshold indexing to inflation, to looking at different benchmarks for extension, to looking at transition periods for when the new mechanism, mechanisms would come online. So would things come, what are the new changes to flexibility be in 2031 versus in 2025 to see out this current iteration of the program? So all of those things are in the ether right now. And the way the council is working to approach this is as we receive proposals, because we have received some credible proposals from different coalitions and things like that, is to include those main themes and elements. And as we move forward, make sure that people's voices are represented and seen in this work. But again, you know, one of the reasons that I feel strongly about this work is because, you know, in those conversations, I do get a sense that there's a, an agreement on the need for us to acknowledge that the status quo is, is, there's a lot of frustration with the public around our ability to deliver on homelessness on the timeline that, that we said we would address it on. And we have an opportunity, we see an opportunity to do multiple things in terms of adding flexibility of, you know, with this measure. We're not saying we're going to build a specific number of units per se, but we want to add that flexibility so that if we need to build permanent supportive housing, which would be housing for the most deeply affordable, for the folks with the highest acuity experiencing the deepest medical problems, that we're able to build a specific kind of housing to take care of people, that just putting them in a shelter or putting them in an apartment without those services is not going to be able to really truly address the problem. So I kind of want to pull back a little bit in terms of some of the examples, I think, and, and talk, we're, we're really looking at adding the, the flexibility that the system needs and working with our county partners and our city partners. When we need that flexibility, let's deploy it. But importantly, we need to stay, we want to stabilize the program and strengthen the program. And we know that that's going to happen by going from these three different oversight committees, which kind of like, the, the success of those is honestly quite mixed. And being able to kind of synthesize, consolidate and kind of change that government bureaucracy from three to one and create a much clearer roadmap, I think is going to be really effective in this measure. So if I could, the, there's, there's been a lot of changes, as you can imagine, with, with the amount, the amount of money that we're talking about here.
And I, I have to comment, and thank you for the opportunity. Keep in mind, we have to be a little humble. When we started, we didn't know what we were doing. We still only have a glimmer of what we're doing. It's been very successful. We know that we have service. We know that we have service providers who know how to provide services, and we know we have a business community that knows how to build houses that are suitable and that are appropriate. But exactly how we're going to get this to work out in the long term is still something that will be resolved. So I have an open mind, I try and maintain an open mind. The structure of, for example, the oversight body is still to be determined. I consider that an open issue. The big problem there is trying to maintain a regional, trying to create a regional system, which we didn't have before, and yet maintain local flexibility, which respects the needs and the skills of the counties, the housing authorities, and the cities and their needs. There is no, there is no how to create a housing and supportive homeless service system booklet for dummies. I mean, we don't, we're making it as we go along. So it's going to be a work in progress, and it's going to remain a work in progress for another couple of years. So, and I think the point is that we feel that we need to start fairly soon to get some buy-in on the overall process of making this adaptable and making this suit the long-term needs, because nobody anticipates we're going to solve the homelessness problem by 2030.
And also, if I could add, the three county chairs in the three counties have submitted a proposal to Metro. There's agreement on almost all the elements. What we're looking at is the baselines, the rates, the formulas and things like that. But there's general agreement on some of these broader changes that will help strengthen the system. So I do want to highlight that we have, that there is a level of ownership and partnership in this. And again, there's a lot of conversations happening in the background, but we're here in the spirit of some of that transparency and wanting to engage you and share, especially given what we, some of the successes that we've seen. But Andy, is there anything that we can share in addition about, because I think Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg, you're getting to something really important around like what is actually, what is actually the things that we're working on? And what we wanted to highlight with our slides is the themes of the items that we want to advance and work on to strengthen the system.
I mean, I would say there is growing agreement that a simplified, single governance body is the right way to go. It's who's on it, what exactly are the duties that they have? I think to your question, Mayor, about timing, we're hearing the concern about trying to put too much out there right now. And so the conversation is, is there a way to simplify the key pieces that need to go to the ballot? We can't change the uses without going back to the voters. We can't extend the tax program without going back to the voters. So those are two core things. Voters are also interested in seeing governance reforms, and so we think that needs to be out and proposed to them as well. Many of the details could be things that the council enacted in an ordinance on its own and are to be, you know, worked out later. So I think trying to hear the concerns of timing, that is a reaction to that. I would just also note, the first round of proposals was sort of made in the COO recommendation last July, and there's been a lot of evolution since then in conversations with local governments and others. And it was really an outside coalition of partners between the business community and here-together coalition of providers and others that came forward with the concept of a 20-year extension connected to this tax reduction concept. So there are groups right now having discussions further about those details, and we hope soon they'll be coming out with some new proposals that might move the needle on both the tax reduction and extension timeline.
Counselor Teeter.
Thank you all. I've got a lot of concerns. I'll start with saying that I really like the housing bond, the work we've been able to do, the supportive housing services funding has been tremendously helpful. But I do have a lot of concerns about these changes. One of those is the timeline. May is not very far away, and we are still grappling with what I feel are some pretty core questions about how this would even work. In the back of our room there, on a huge poster printout, we've got our council strategic goals and council priorities. Those changed as of this past weekend, we had our council retreat. And our one key priority this coming year, next year or two, is financial recovery because our city is really, really struggling financially. And any additional burden to cities is almost just a non-starter. Because we can't afford to carry anymore of this financial burden. The mayor mentioned some of the burden we've been carrying, and we will carry as long as we can, but genuinely, I don't know how long we can. When we continually look at our budget deficit that we will keep on facing until we have some structural changes. One of the questions I want to ask about is related to the city and county allocation. There is a note here in our agenda bill that said that the allocation to cities and counties would be capped at 3% inflation. Was I reading that right?
I mean, there was a proposal to, in one of the scenarios, it was if you set a floor for base county funding, that that should then grow by some inflationary amount. And 3% was used in that scenario as the right amount. I think counties have shared back concerns about that growth rate not matching the growth rate in services costs and in other capital costs. And so we're certainly aware of, I think Washington County came back with a combined suggested rate of something like 5.4% increase in inflation. So we're absolutely looking at that.
For being included in our analysis, for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate you all looking more at that. Again, the mayor mentioned measures 5 and 50. We are severely handicapped and partially in this budget crisis that we are in because our property tax increases are capped at 3%. And inflation has been way beyond that over the past several years. So I think that definitely needs a deeper look. I also am concerned about the decrease on taxable income, the rate that higher income earners would be paying into these services. We need, we need the funding, and I feel like we might be holding ourselves back by what we can provide for the community in an effort to save a little bit of funding from people who can actually, by and large, afford to pay, to pay that minor change in taxable income that would be going to supportive housing services. So I wouldn't want to really change that very much. In fact, I'd rather see that funding go to the cities that are actually providing the services. I have one more comment here. Again, I'll just end by, with the timeline. We just heard that, you know, started not really knowing the direction that you're going, and that you have a glimmer of an idea of the direction that you're going, and that is very concerning. Like by now, I feel like we should, we should have the plan, we should know the accountability measures, we should have that governance strategy, like ready to go and agreed upon, because we don't want just to have cities to be in the room to give our voice and then not actually have it have any weight. In my mind, the accountability measure is the fact that it has to go back out to the voters. And if voters are saying they don't want a housing bond, that's really hard for me to get behind something that says, oh, we're going to shift some of the funding away from the services that we still feel like we need. So I just say all that to say, like, I've got a lot of concerns, and I don't know if there'd be enough time for me to get behind it by May. It's a tough spot to be in, so.
Counselor Tibman.
Thank you. And thank you for me. I will try not to retread the tire too much in my comments, but I want to start by just reflecting on the success of the Affordable Housing Bond and the specter that creates for the SHS bond. I think that it's not just here locally that people are astonished at how successful that program was. I've heard it from people outside of Oregon that took note of it. And that credit has to go to Metro, the staff of Metro, and the collaborative work with every key partner in place to make that happen, including the staff here at the city of Beaverton. I think, I think that also creates a burden, and there's two of them, on the supportive housing services bond. One is the spectacular success of getting all that housing built and thinking that it was just due to the money. And I don't think that's true. I think it's also, it was pre-COVID, and it's, yes, we're still spending the money now, but when, when all of the lightning in a bottle happened for that, it was during the 10-year economic expansion that we were experiencing the times now versus the times then are drastically different from each other. The other part of it is that SHS has created way more funding than was originally forecasted to the voters. And looking at all of that funding, I think that people might have gotten, you know, bigger appetites at the buffet of what else, what else can we do with this? Because there is an urgent need. And we are never unaware of the fact that we have, here in Beaverton, the shadow of Portland around us, especially as it relates to the regional governments or TRIMET, that it is a center of gravity, and the issues there are louder. Sometimes the advocates are louder, the business community is louder, and it can crowd out the voices of the surrounding cities and other regional jurisdictions, especially as it relates to common issues affecting all of us, including homelessness. What we see ahead of us right now is a shelter that was so thoughtfully designed and built, as Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg said, through the collaborative efforts of so many partners, including Metro. We see so much promise in that, but it all hinges on suitable funding for operations and for all of the services that we have envisioned it providing over the long term. So we need the funding for that. But as the mayor said, in terms of staff, resources, and funding, it just simply is not going to be there for us in the same way it was when the Affordable Housing Bond was passed. So we're not going to be able to utilize those dollars. We can utilize the supportive services dollars, and we desperately need them. So in my head, I was always thinking to that point about that particular type of housing that you were speaking to, that it goes beyond affordable housing or deeply affordable housing to be permanent supportive housing for our most vulnerable residents. I've seen that type of architecture, I've seen those buildings when I toured some up in Seattle, where they have a lot more benevolent millionaires and billionaires helping to fund it. And it's, it is remarkable what the outcomes can be when you have that kind of housing stock to provide. But we simply don't have the reality of boots on the ground to get that developed at this point in time here in Beaverton. I would be very supportive of seeing a future bond that is dedicated to that kind of housing that is similar to the Affordable Housing Bond, but trying to stuff it into this existing bond, I don't, I honestly don't think the voters are going to go for it, especially if you don't have the support of all of the cities saying that they enthusiastically endorse the changes to this bond. So I'm just concerned about it. I am deeply grateful for the thought work that Metro is doing at looking at this as a regional issue that we're all trying to tackle together. But I feel like our dance moves aren't quite down on this one the way they were with Affordable Housing Bond, and that we're tripping over ourselves and stepping on each other's toes a little bit. So I think that maybe taking a longer lens to how we solve this and not creating too much urgent anxiety around the ending of this one, it isn't here yet. And we do still have some time, that maybe we need that extra time to really come up with a strategy that's, that's going to measure up to what we were able to accomplish with the Affordable Housing Bond. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing the dance moves visual into that, I appreciate it. Counselor Hussin.
Thank you for the presentation. I will not talk about dancing, and I will also try to be brief. I just wanted to take a minute and just answer the question that's up there. What should Metro Council consider in this draft proposal? Obviously, my colleagues have said multiple things. I think the most important thing is that intentional collaboration with the cities. I think that we are the closest to what we're seeing on the streets, and we want to be as involved as possible, so continued engagement with us in whatever ways we can have. I do want to like just be thoughtful of like how we're leveraging public safety with helping with homelessness. I know there was like intentional language, I think, in the original architecture, I don't know what it's looking like in the future, but I do want to like just be thinking about that for kind of long term, like what does that look like? What does addressing homelessness look like in a way that is ensuring that we are truly providing housing? I think those are kind of the main thoughts that come to my mind. I know this has been a longer labor of love for you all, so I don't know like where this is really going to land and where my support and our support will be, but I hope we can continue to have this conversation. I look forward to hearing more. Thanks.
Well, thank you for joining us today. I do just want to thank Counselor Rosenthal, because I do know that you helped kind of push more city participation on the board when the counties were asking for less city participation on the governance board of that. And so make sure that we retain in this new oversight committee a large number of mayors, I think is incredibly important. We're, you know, the closest to the work. They find me in the grocery store, we know what's out, we're the ones actually implementing in the work here. And I love our county pastors and the county chairs, but most voters couldn't find a county chair in a grocery store, but they most certainly find me. So having mayor's voices there are really important. And I just also want to say that like our desire from cities is that this, we talked a lot about regionalism, but like, to be honest, there is no regional solution to homelessness. It is city by city. What we've done has been remarkable. I mean, Portland, our Harvard Business Review has written a case study on our ability to reduce homelessness. But what worked here is not going to work in Gresham, or To Walatin, or Sherwood. And so while we, I appreciate the idea of regional accountability, I just want to make sure that there is no regional solution to this problem that exists. Cities, and by our state constitution, are the level of government that address the issues. And so making sure that we retain that, like what works here doesn't work somewhere else. And we've fought the Portland Metro Chamber quite often as the mayors on this topic, that there is no regional solution. And to make sure that this oversight board doesn't become an approval board. Like what I need to do to address homelessness in Beaverton shouldn't be voted on by somebody that lives in Gresham. And so just making sure that we retain our ability to act as a sovereign city and address the issues as our need. So I appreciate you guys being here tonight. I think our last couple conversations with Metro haven't been easy, but I just, I appreciate you coming to have the, you know, having us do this. I know that some of your partners are in other cities, because all the mayors got on a group text about our combined messaging. So I'm sure your colleagues heard something very similar in your other city presentations tonight. And hey, I'll be at Metro on Friday talking about this, and I'll be at Metro next Monday talking about this. So as the conversation continues, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the feedback and the concern. The level of the concern is great.
Yeah, we'll take it back. Thank you.
Mayor Beatty, I beg your favor.
Yeah, I just was getting up to leave, but I haven't closed the meeting, so we'll do that too.
We had quite active visitor comment registration, and unfortunately, in the shuffle, we left off J.C. from Home Plate Services, who did sign up to speak and would like to speak, address the council.
Yeah, let's do it. I mean, come on now. You came out here, and I just appreciate your nodding. Most people don't engage when we're talking, so just to the fact that you nodded the whole time we're here, we're going to let you do some talking.
Yeah, thank you all so much. Oh my goodness. Okay. Timing is great. And, all right. So good evening. My name is J.C. Sabala, and I'm here tonight to represent Home Plate Youth Services' opposition to Metro's proposed tax cut and SHS funding reduction, which we all just heard about. For the past 20 years, Home Plate has been Washington County's only youth-focused provider of both street outreach and drop-in services for people under 25 experiencing homelessness. Today, we serve about 1,000 youth per year, and I'm here to tell you that that number is growing unsustainably. As you can imagine, our organization has seen a dramatic increase in demand for services since the 2020 pandemic and since the opening of our drop-in center in downtown Beaverton off of Fourth Street. Before the pandemic, it was typical for us to see 10 to 15 youth per night for hot meals, showers, and resource navigation. Today, seeing six times that amount per night is the reality. As a part of the development team at Home Plate, I want to highlight how incredibly important local resources have been to the success of getting folks housed and keeping them housed. Our largest funders at Home Plate come through your partners at Metro through supportive housing services or SHS dollars. According to an analysis by the Welcome Home Coalition, the proposed tax cut will save wealthy households making $250,000 per year, $4 a month in savings. In turn, this will reduce at minimum our homeless services resources by about $17.5 million per year. Our official housing program was established and has flourished thanks to SHS dollars. Housing has allowed the young people who are in the program to end the cycle of homelessness, not have this be a chronic condition, and think about their futures when they engage in our education and employment programs. I cannot express enough that this work cannot be done, nor will it be sustainable without the continued support of SHS funding. Lowering the tax rate can ultimately lead to more young people returning to housing instability and homelessness. In conclusion, at this time, our community needs to see more people housed and services to keep them housed. We at Home Plate believe this measure needs significant revision before it is ready to go out to the voters, and we would like to see more service providers involved as opposed to the business community in continuing to shape a measure that works for everyone. Thank you all so much for letting me speak about this afterward. Thank you.
Yeah, well, sorry about the mishap. I gave you on the agenda earlier, and thanks for hanging around. We appreciate you guys. Okay, we do have counsel new business. I see your end again, Counselor Hussin. I see your end again, Counselor Hussin.
Hello. I like being between you and the bed, so I'm going to take my sweet time. Just kidding. I, two things. One, I want to just thank staff and everyone who helped today happen. For those of you who didn't join us, several of us were sworn in, all the things. And I really appreciate everyone who helped make that happen. You, you all know who you are. Counselor Duggar, Counselor Kimmy and I got to go to the ACLU briefing back in December about kind of what's to come with the new administration. And I thought, I'd just kind of walk you through a couple of things that I heard that I'm taking back to people, and I think maybe you've heard it, maybe you haven't, but it's important for you to know. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion about Oregon being a sanctuary state, so that means public agencies are not supposed to engage in immigration enforcement. And typically, what we tell folks is if they think they're being detained or something's happening, they have to ask whether there's a judicial warrant. So just something for you to be thinking about as you're talking with your different communities. But probably the most important thing that I walked away with, and I don't know if it was in that briefing or a different one, was establishing guardianship. Y'all know I taught at Beaverton High School. Novella's sons both went through my class many years ago. And Beaverton High School also had a really large undocumented community. And one of the biggest fears, I think, is coming home to your family being gone. So folks have been talking about establishing guardianship guidelines for their families. So if you or anyone listening or anyone here has ties or connections to folks in the undocumented community or folks who could potentially face some sort of deportation, it's important to have a guardianship plan. So working with your children, your family members to make sure that they know what to do in those cases. So never in my 42 years of living did I think I would be advising folks to think about making those kinds of plans. We're really lucky, because we have a lot of local family that can step in if it happens to us. But wanted to make sure you all heard that and are sharing that with the different folks that you all interact with. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just judicial warrants are not really hard to secure. So making sure when you're sharing this information with families that they, they recognize that that is not as hard of a barrier to get. So just making sure that people know that and making a plan. And we, a lot of us have lived through a Trump administration and my time at Virginia Garcia and making these plans. And, and my concerns are deeper around birthright citizenship and, and some of the other things that we're hearing here. And so I would just advise everyone to be making a citizenship plan and a trust and will for your kids and family. No matter what your immigration status is, it's a really smart, important thing to do, which is why for years I've been trying to get the, the judges and, and some of our attorneys in town to do trust clinics, because we obviously couldn't know that we were in this moment. But I think trust clinics are a very smart way for us that we might be able to invest some time and energy in the future protecting families and their assets that they have built wealth up in our community. So with that, wonderful day, lots of photos. I can't wait to see them. Edward in his pink tie, Kevin put on a jacket. I've never seen John wear a tie before. Ashley, of course, wore pink. Nadia's makeup wins the award. It was really awesome. And your son coming up to hold your hand. I, I hope that there was a lot of photos of that moment, and you should be deeply proud of him and his empathy, not only towards you, but wanting to stand next to you. It just, it radiated from him. And I tried to snap a photo of Allison with her family, but your son is so large now that I have a photo of your son swearing in. So if you're interested in that, I will send it back. And yes, of course, thank you to our staff that pulled off today. Jessie, that supports the council, and Jen, that supports me, made today. I know she was there for your photos and making sure everyone felt awesome and looked at. And after coming off this weekend, we were not supposed to have a meeting tonight, and we got to talk about the world's most sexiest project that consumes all of my time and energy. So I'm glad we're all out there with those concerns, and we'll see each other in two weeks.